All right, it's 7:00 p.m. at the call of the township township meeting. The order of first thing is the Republican Flight and Act 6 of America.
I agree with you to apply to the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. The first thing I'd like to do before the meeting starts. Just have a moment of silence for our former Councilman, Bumgarner, who passed away just very recently. Thank you. Okay, so the first thing, we have the consent agenda, we have some additions. We have one, the one, the Coroner Secretary for the Pank Commission.
Um, we have A will be the shape of our presentation.
I think we're gonna do that slash, slash, um, yeah. Because he's gonna kinda talk about Omni, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're adding that where?
The very first thing underneath business, we're gonna put that as A.
New business, not the consent agenda.
No, we're gonna put it under, just so he doesn't have to stay double meeting unless he has to.
And then you're gonna put the recording secretary.
Right.
And then I also would like to... We're gonna have to shift all the letters down then.
Now we're getting rid of the Omni.
We're gonna have to shift some of them.
We'll have to shift, yeah.
And then I'd like to pour, it would be, I think it's gonna be letter G for Victoria Hocke. Increase request, I would like to put slash elections type then, and I'll put a memo at the table for her.
Um, G, did you say?
I think it's G.
You think it's gonna be G?
Add it to G.
Mm-hmm.
Is what she's saying.
All right.
As we go through, we'll, we'll make sure the letters are correct.
All right.
And it's just the recording secretary, so it'll still be A to Q. I'll have it right in the minutes. She'll just kinda shift those.
Thank you.
Well, you'll make sure it's right.
And thank you for that nice cheering.
That would be Katie now. She does a very good job of the harmonizing.
So you ought to have one more day to get your candy into me.
Or flowers.
Flowers are good too. And send out a lot of your tax payments.
Yes.
They're better than cash receipts.
There were, there were a few punch keys today, I'm disappointed in you people.
I have a pistachio punch key.
Ooh. Okay. So then, let's get on with this.
The consent agenda, okay, like, uh, who got it?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendments to the agenda as noted.
Okay, do you have support?
Support.
Yeah, motion support to, um, to approve the consent agenda with the two, with added items. Okay, we'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kacinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion here. It's old business, budget amendments, I place for you your packets, uh, the budget amendments. Any questions?
Yep. Last question, Joe. Um, so... I was going through this, and I was comparing it to the budget amendments that you brought forth last month.
Yeah.
And... I, I'm confused a little bit. Um, in the second section, third section, the last item, you have $5,000 from the Rogue Commission Fund.
Right.
On our agenda, you have Rogue Commission work orders. How are you taking money out of the Rogue Commission Fund when you're, when we're gonna speak, when we're gonna approve more work orders?
And the work orders are already, um, over, uh, Rogue money.
I guess we can talk about that when we get to work orders.
Yes, we will, but that was my question.
Yes. And then, in that fourth section, um, I think the, you have $2,000 from capital outlay. Two, the account number you have is not the supplies.
Your stuff.
It's not. So I'm assuming that it's supposed to be... Yeah, 931 is cemetery maintenance and repair. And that one, I don't think is, is that one that's over budget? That is the one over budget. So I think maybe you have a title on it, shouldn't be Supplies Office Maintenance Building.
Okay.
Cause I think, let me see what the supplies one is, that's 7527 or 758. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. All I know is that account number is not that title, so I don't know if you want it to that account number.
No, I'll check into that.
Which is cemetery. The problem is, is we need to get these done.
Right.
And I, I went back and I looked at all the meeting minutes from the, like, pretty much the last year, this, the beginning of fiscal year from April on. And out of all of those, two of them, we did budget amendments. Most of them said postponed till the next board meeting. I, that's unacceptable to me. That's a big portion of your statutory duties. So, I, I don't know. Anybody else?
Would you be more comfortable in, um... Requesting help in this situation, in, in the creation and oversight of the budget for the township yearly? Would you prefer we hire this out?
No, I, I, the budget amendments, um, just, I'll correct these. And get them.
Okay.
Any other questions on your budget amendments, other than the two that you brought up?
Well, I'm afraid working with account numbers, as the clerk's office does, as supervisors office does, um, is not how I do it. Uh, so I'm just looking at the overall amended budget and, um, the line items, and that's what I go by. Um, and that's what I've always gone by. And so, again, I say, um, I know, I know very well that in recent years past, um, the last supervisor often had, um, help from the auditors to amend budgets, and that was how we proceeded there. And if you need to do that, if you need to have outside help to maintain the budget for the township, so that we can pass in a state audit, then you should really think about that.
I thought you said you got, you took a class, right?
Yeah. I also been working with another supervisor on this.
Well, we'll be up against it with the auditors, that's all I have to say.
Well, the problem is, is we were turned into state last year because the, the budget was not balanced by the end of the fiscal year. Wes from, from King &amp; Kane said that since it was our first offense, and he didn't think anything was gonna happen, and I have not received anything, but that doesn't mean that it's still not in the works, because the state's very far behind us at the end of the day. It took them a year to get me a tech for $3,000, so that could still be coming. My fear is that if this happens again, it's gonna be, they could come and take us over. That has been done, I believe, Chesterfield Township, it wasn't, it wasn't for the finance, I believe, at this building department?
Yeah.
But they came in and they got with everybody and...
They put their person in and they take over whatever.
And we're the ones that work with the numbers, so if things aren't balanced and the way they're supposed to be, it makes us look bad. And that's not fair, because we're trying to do our jobs. So... I also had a question, Joe, about some of the account balances. Um, the budget contingency, the number that, that should be the balance isn't what's on there, and I'm afraid when you did those budget amendments a couple of months ago, I think it was back in October, that we didn't approve, and they were sitting in my general ledger, and I had to post them because I had my house receivable, remember all that, and you were supposed to check into that? I don't think you checked into that.
Yeah, but the, wouldn't that show on this?
No, it's not gonna show, cause if the budget amendments were posted, it's gonna take that off of that account. Because I pulled out the two budget amendments that we approved, one was in August, August 8th, we approved taking $500 out of the budget contingency account. And then in November, we approved taking money out of the budget contingency, and it said that the ending balance was $4,341.94. That is not what is on the current revenue and expenditures report. If you look, it's, um, it's on your second page, the bottom line of the first bunch of numbers, so 101, 101, 997. It's 3,341.94, that's not what it should be according to what your budget amendments were. And I didn't look through all of them, because I didn't have time, because we got the budget amendments yesterday.
But that's what the budget contingency account says it is, yeah.
According to, according to our, the budget adjustment that we did, that we approved in November, it said that the ending balance should be 4,300.194. It's 3,301.
So it's one, one thousand dollars off.
It's a thousand dollars off.
Exactly.
That's why I think it's, those amendments that you did, that you said got double posted, or whatever, you were gonna check into that. I don't think it was ever checked into, because it's a thousand dollars off.
And that just is such a clear number.
Correct. So, but that's just one account, are all these double entries? Like I said, I didn't have time to look through all this.
I'll do tomorrow.
Are you comfortable, Joe, with soldiering on, with this budget work? Or would you like help?
Well, the budget amendments right now may need a little help, but the budget itself, uh, the next year's a budget. You know, I've been doing some estimating and gathering information.
So this, this here, I'm looking at the 23, 24 budget.
What? What page are you, let me find the right one, what page are you on, honey?
Well, this is, this is after the amendments. This is, this is the revenue and expenditure report.
What's the first account number that's on there?
101, 000402, current real property taxes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and like I'm saying, this is what I go by.
Right.
You know, you can switch up, that's between you and the accountants and the auditors. Um, this is what I, this is mine, right here. So I'm saying, if you're having trouble, um, with the budget adjustments, and you need more help with that, then we need to get that help, because we cannot afford to...
I agree.
Okay.
And this is my thing, that we've been asking everyone the budget amendments, and they keep getting postponed. We cannot do that anymore.
I brought them for you last month.
And we had to postpone because they were not correct.
They were not correct.
And they're still not correct.
I think it's important to get help, and I think there's no one ashamed of doing so. Budgets are hard.
Yeah. All right, I'll call the auditor, King, tomorrow.
Yeah.
They can go with those same OR accounts very well.
Well, I'm not just saying that for years, all I knew was that the auditors did this. They did it when Patty called them, um, they did them when Karen called them. Um, she more than directed them what to do, but, um, but they did it.
Okay.
Uh, if we need that help, or if we need, if we need an oversight, um, on budget work, then we have to hire that out.
I'll call King tomorrow.
Get their recommendation, please.
Okay.
All right.
But we cannot drive this, this does not make any sense to me.
Are we postponing this?
I'm sorry, yes.
So...
Do we postpone to a certain date, or do we just postpone? That's me.
All right. Okay, um, now we're up at the, the preliminary budget, does anyone have any questions on that?
Should I start?
Please.
Um, last month, I asked you to look some of these over more carefully. Most of them have not changed from what they were last month. Um, I know I've told you a couple times, when you're doing the budget, you have to think about past, present, future.
Right.
What we spent in the past, what we're spending now, what things might go up to, and you have to look at each account. Okay? So I'm looking through, and I will just take, um, on the first page, in the middle, or the bottom section, right in the middle, account number 101, 101, 715, Township Share of Social Security Taxes. Okay? If you look at what we, what our amended budget is, is 20,000, okay? What are at the, as of when you pulled, pulled the report, oh, sorry, I think I'm looking at the wrong one. Let me look at this one. When you pulled the report on February 8th, we were at 23,540, okay? So we're already 3,500 dollars over budget, which will need an amendment. You put a proposed budget of 21,000.
Yeah, I'm not...
Do you see what I'm saying, though? You, you have to put, it looks, when I looked through this and I did some calculations, you just upped everything by 5%. You took our amended budget and you upped everything by 5%, minus a few things here and there. You can't do that.
What, okay.
I know, that's what you were told, yeah, but you have to look at the accounts, otherwise you're gonna be doing a budget amendments every month. And I don't approve a budget like that, I'm sorry, I don't know what the rest of the board would do, but that's not what I would do. Um, and then, you know, look at, if you go onto the second page, if you look at... The pension, 101, 101, 919, that's another example. The amended budget was 35,000. Right now, we're at 38,296, and you put for a proposed budget 36,000. Those are just two examples, I mean, I can go through there. And then, you know, with, with, um, the contracts, with Cassin, we know what he's gonna charge us. So you multiply that by 12, maybe add in, cause he's doing some different reviews, add a little bit of cushion in there. But you just went and you took whatever we had for last, last, for the amended budget and just upped it by 5%.
And that generally is a good rule of thumb.
But if you know...
But if you know what's, what's coming.
Right.
Especially, you know...
You have to put thought into it, it's not just, I'm gonna work on it the, the weekend before the meeting and, and just throw numbers. When I did the budget last year, it was the same time, I worked Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday on holiday weekend. I came up here every day, and I had that budget done in four days, but I spent all day up here.
Every day.
Every day. I don't, maybe I just put too much dedication into it, but...
There's no such thing, it's too much dedication. Um, when you're working for people, when you're, when you're public servant, there's no such thing. I'm just, I, I'm just wanting to throw this out, where I don't mean to be, um, what better word? Never mind, I'll, I'll hold it for next week, I'm, I'm just going to ask, would you be prepared to take over budget work if we were asking? You seem to have a very good grasp of this, this is what your duty is in.
I've done it for the last two years.
Yes.
I have no problem doing that. I, I understand, I mean, I might not do it 100%, cause I've never had budgeting classes, but I can get the gist of it.
You're very good at math without budgeting classes.
That's true.
And you would, uh, you would work well, I think, with the auditors as well, because unlike, um, unlike some previous, you would understand why the amendments were being made.
Correct.
And that's the most important thing, is to understand why these numbers are what they are.
The problem with waiting, though, the proposed budget has to be available to our residents by March 5th.
The day after.
March 5th.
Beginning of March 5th.
It has to, they has to be available to them before our annual meeting, which means it has to be passed by the board before that.
And, and equally as important as that, is that it has to be explained to the general public if they have a question.
Correct.
Just like a tax bill has to be explained, or an assessment notice must be explained, that's our job.
Right.
So the preliminary, by the 5th of March, it has to be available.
It has to be available to them. Which means it has to be approved by the board before that.
And posted.
Sorry, posted.
And posted, yes indeed. So...
How about this? I mean, we're gonna make adjustments, and we have a special meeting to prove it before the 5th of March.
I'm not worried about the amendments, the amendments need to be done by the end of March before our fiscal year ends. I'm talking about the postponed.
Yeah, preliminary.
Are you gonna understand, are you gonna put the effort and time to figure it out?
Then I'll make a motion to postpone, uh, the preliminary budget, and get the supervisor trying to work on that.
Well, I encourage you to get all the help you need, it's probably...
It's not an easy, it's not an easy task.
And we should just give them a call.
No, not an easy task, nobody could walk in the door and just do this, nobody.
I am just gonna say, though, if, if you need me to do this, I need to know, because I have a lot of election stuff. We'll be working non-stop from this, sorry, from yesterday until February 27th.
Yeah.
Every day.
Every day.
No, I'll, I'll make these adjustments, you have a big task ahead of you for the election.
I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm willing to do it, I just, I don't wanna be last minute asked to do it and promised.
Okay, any other questions? My new business, Consumer Energy's parcel.
Are we going to honor this first, to just get them, like, to get home before the snow's hit?
Yes.
Snow's hit. We're only five minutes from home, I don't know where you live.
I'm not too far, so I'll subgratuate to make a grade.
Oh, well, congratulations.
You want me to come up? Yeah. All right. Thank you, I'm Michael Hornsby with Toshiba, I had stopped in, I don't know, probably a year and a half ago to, to see Jennifer, we're not a dealer, right? So you acquired your current Toshiba from a dealer, premier. They have been sold to Visualx Technologies, which is a dealership out of Canton, Ohio. And you can look this part up financially, it's not the same company as Craig Zimmerman.
I was gonna say, Craig Zimmerman is, I, I'm disappointed.
Well, you know, he did the right thing, right?
Yes, he always does.
When I say this, I'm not, my 40 of those customers have come over us directly, okay? So that's a problem.
He should have told us about you, because that's what I'm gonna get Craig Zimmerman for.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, L.R. Oliver, the, the business there, China Towns, is such a bunch younger than us.
Okay.
So we had looked at our...
Craig Zimmerman brought his premier into East China schools years and years ago.
Yeah.
I worked with him many, many years.
I've been doing it for about 25, so I've battled against him, he knows me very well.
There you go.
Yeah, so I, I know that he's in another business now, but he's not happy with what happened. So, as far as Omni, so Toshiba has been awarded the Omni contract, okay? So if you're familiar with My Neil Pricing, the state of Michigan?
We were not.
Okay, so the state of Michigan is called My Neil Pricing. Omni is throughout the country, okay? We were awarded the printer copy, a company, awarding on that. You guys are talking about different things, I know there's some expansion coming up. There's 299 other contracts on here for pretty much anything you think of. Playground equipment, windows, tables, whatever you need, I would highly recommend that you look into that. It's a do not exceed contract, and there's some things that they negotiated on behalf that I'll get into, that you're currently not utilizing today.
Okay.
Okay? It's a free membership, somewhere down the line, you guys signed up?
Next year, we didn't have to.
Okay. So there's no spending, you don't have to spend a certain amount, anything like that, the pricing's all public, but I highly encourage you to do that. There was a church report here, and I told Jennifer this, they had the copiers from us, and I came there to do a partnership review, and they were getting quotes on a new amazing floor. And I said, hey, did you look at Omni? She said, no, and I said, you probably should, save them $10,000 on what they're willing to sell. So it's worth every penny to do.
Oh my.
Okay? Any questions outside of that, I don't wanna take up too much time.
No, we liked your presentation this morning.
Oh, okay.
But we met with Haley.
Haley.
From Omni.
Okay.
And, cause when we talked, she had contacted me, it was, it was so weird, you know, you stopped in and she contacted me, and I said, you know, we're, we're doing an addition, and she's gonna hook us up with a bunch of different suppliers.
Yeah.
And we have Sintas, and Sintas is in there, so she's hooking me up with a Sintas.
Yeah.
Amazon Business, Home Depot, Sherman Williams for paint, Steelcase for furniture, yeah.
Pretty much, like I said, anything that you can imagine.
If it saves us a thousand and a half in there and adds up to that.
It's not easy to be the authority. So, we're happy to say that you've done that, okay? Um, if there's not any questions on this, you can go to the next page, it's just, your current device, okay? So we utilize different tools, this is called the Compass Product Comparison Tool. And your current device was introduced on May 1st of 2016 and discontinued in June of 2019. So Toshiba, we're the manufacturer, right? We only guarantee parts for these things seven years after the introduction date, so you guys are beyond that. Our current customers that have the 3005, Omni had a letter saying we can't service it any longer, just because, you know, the parts that we have in the car stock are for the newer generation machines, okay? So, I just wanted to send this, or... Okay, so I just wanted to send this or print this out so you guys know exactly where you're at with it. Okay? Next page is your service invoice. So this is quarterly and Jennifer had shared this with me. And there's a couple of things that you want to be aware of here. Okay? First of all, when you sign this agreement, there was a purchase and you signed a separate maintenance agreement, which was supposed to be usage only. So what that means is here's your rate for every mono image. Here's your rate for every color image. You pay for it over a given timeframe based on what you guys produce. I'm sure there's ebbs and flows around here where you do more printing and copying than every time of the year. So if you think about the schools out there, why would they commit to any value when they're not opening in summer? Right, so they'll pay for that. Okay, so what Visual Edge did, back to the financial ruins, is because it wasn't part of the lease, they committed to you guys the copies. Even though you signed a usage only agreement, they went back and put it here. They've done it to everybody. Okay, so if you notice here where it says covered, down towards the bottom, that was never part of it.
He's looking at the invoice.
The Visual Edge invoice right here. And if you look down at the bottom, it says covered 8,060. You guys did 4712, so you paid for it and it didn't utilize. Okay? And then look what they did for color. They only covered you for 596 a quarter, but you guys did 7,000. Just under 7,000. Okay? So where it says billable, 6,357 at 0798 is what they charged. Okay, and then up above, they didn't. You guys haven't seen the sales rep since you probably had the machine to go through and do partnership reviews. We would get fired. It doesn't mean that we have to come out every quarter, but it means that I quick email, phone call, how's the copyer? Hey, we got some new people or hey, there was a service issue, what have you. Okay? So you probably couldn't even tell me who it was or, you know, I'm sure the service tech. I think there's two service techs left over there. You know, and before there was plan. Any questions on this before we get into proposing? Okay, so the next one on the investment schedule. What I did is your current spend up above. I took that invoice and I divided it by three so you can see what it looks like per month. Okay? So the mono images, when it was divided by three is 1,571 times 0.0089 is $13.98. Color, 2,318, 0798, 184.98. On average, you're spending those $200 a month just for service. Which is going to be canceled fairly soon. Okay? So just so you know, there is a 3,005 that you guys got. Then there's a 3015 and now there's a 3025, which I am proposing tonight. So some of the things I just want to cover in here, and we talked about it, so I won't bore you too much, but there's some things that have changed with your business that now meets the new copyer. Okay, so the first one, believe it or not, and this isn't a big deal, but Toshiba invented ATM machines. So the same rollers that take your money, give your money are not going to free you. Okay? The quality of color has increased dramatically just based on the finer than get that color, the better the quality it is. Okay? Here's what's big because people use these things to scan more than they use to print copy nowadays. Like you wouldn't believe. So advanced scanning. Underneath that, Toshiba DSD app. So what this is, is a single pass duplexing document feeder on top. Okay, you could put 300 pages on there and it scans 240 images per minute. Even though the output of the copier is only 30 pages. Okay? Today, you have a reverse automatic document feeder. So if it's two-sided, it has to come through, flip it over, bring it through. Now there's a camera here and a camera here. In a single pass, it gets both sides of the piece of paper. If you have mixed originals, some of them are one-sided, some are two-sided. It'll miss that white page because it will take a picture of the white page. You're probably getting that today.
They even mix that.
Okay, and I turned it out for you. So I came in here and did some things that you guys should have had from the get-go. I didn't sell you that one, but just to let you know what was going there. So another thing is we talked about, and I said, hey Jennifer, if you have this document and a hard copy on your desk and you need to edit it today, how do you do it? And I think you said an Adobe license and maybe you're the only one that has it, correct? Okay, so those are expensive. So what Toshiba did is said, okay, we're going to include what's called embedded OCR, Optical Character Recognition. So if you needed to edit this document, you can go to scan, where do you want to scan? Your email file folder, whatever. It defaults to PDF. You pull that down and it says send it back to me in Word or sell it PowerPoint. So now it shows up in that editable format. Because Adobe licenses are expensive. So I'm surprised you have two here. Another thing that may be helpful is what embedded OCR does is let's say your annual report's 500 pages. You can put the first 300 on there, scan them, put the other 200 on there, scan them. Now you want to do a slim PDF so it compresses that file. The embedded OCR is on, when it comes back to you, it's a searchable PDF. So for example, by name is on five of those pages out of 500. A little dialog box opens up, Michael Hornsby goes, these five pages out of 500 have his name on it. Contract numbers, invoice numbers, whatever it may be. So scanning is free too. It's not a click on your maintenance agreement whatsoever. Okay? Another thing that you guys are doing now is Office 65, OneDrive for Business. Okay? So Toshiba is very good at listening to what people want. So now on the icon, there's going to be OneDrive for Business. So if you have documents, you need to scan a OneDrive for Business. You hit the OneDrive for Business icon, you authenticate with your credentials and you can scan directly through a port, right? Or you can go up there because you have files in there and you need to print some. OneDrive for Business shows every single file that you have in there. You go, hey, I need 50 copies of these, it does it. I utilize it because I'm on the road a lot and I can pull anything up on my phone. Instead of stopping to fire up my laptop, to go to emails that are coming in or go to my files, see documents, the desktop, I can get right on my phone through OneDrive. So that's another enhancer. Bear printing, I don't know if you brought it or not, but that's okay.
Can you find that? I'm sorry.
So this, I printed a banner for you guys. It does 12 inches by four feet through the bypass drain. And your current machine does it.
And no one ever saw us.
They didn't show you, they didn't train.
And tell them about Regan's, honey.
Yeah, so Ray Regan's obviously is a nursery there, right? So he, this paper is called Aqua Ace Paper. It looks like it's laminated, but it's not. But it's ultra-mild protection, water-resistant, can't rip it. So he puts two poles in the ground and staples it to it. Says White Rose is here, Japanese maple's over there, and he leaves them all on your own. So back to Omnia. Chinatown shit takes advantage of it. Marine City takes advantage of it. Marine City Police Department takes advantage of it. Brown City takes advantage of it. City of Harper Woods takes advantage of it. They were all with me, which is now Visual Edge. Same situation that you guys were doing. You didn't lease it, but there was property damage surcharge on other invoices. Insurance from the lease company that they're charging them because it was never added them to a pay loss fee by you guys or whoever it may be. So it's the finance company. People just pay it. Depending on how many machines, it could take you hundreds of dollars. It's an older book on the sales rep. Okay? Your premium scan, mobile print capture. It's an app if you guys wanted your copier on your phone. If you have a visitor here and they're on your wireless network, they need to print something on their phones, long as you're on the wireless network, they'll find that device. Okay? Top access is your machines. You've all been printing in registered address books. If there's turnover here or you needed to add people, instead of sending that machine on like this, you pull your machine up, it's already printed. Fax technology. So you guys have a fax board on it now. So I don't know if you're coming out on Monday like we talked about. It says, hey, you want to check the Disney World or you want to check the Las Vegas. That piece of paper is about a penny and a half nowadays. And it goes to their private shred box or whatever. So now with the fax, you can have it come into a folder in an email. That is monitored. Say delete. Hey, I do need to print this. Hey, I don't need to print it, I can store it. Then if you're looking at something that is on your laptop and you need to fax it, today you print it out. You go to the machine, you fax it, after some paper, that goes to the garbage. With this, you can say file, instead of print, fax, there's group new numbers there, fax numbers. Hit the number you want and it goes directly to the fax machine.
Without paper.
Without paper. And then the next page here is, you know, it's 4GB of RAM. We have a large industry here. If we're fortunate enough to earn your business, we would take your current machine and install it correctly. We're never put it back out there. If you guys want it, you can have it. It's more of us just getting rid of it. Very green at Toshiba. If you go to New York, they sell the park benches and read out old copies.
Don't talk to me about that.
So the machine that will be replacing that is a 3025. It includes the document fee that we talked about. It includes a stand. It includes a 50 sheet interfinisher, which is stapler like you have today, and a fax machine and e-bridge for OneDrive. So our price based on the same volumes, right? 1,571 times our rate of 0.0085. 2318 now by 0.0442, which is four cents. It's almost less than half or half of what you're currently spending now. That's where Omnia comes into play. Okay? That being said, you'd be at Q60. So $60 more, you could get a machine with the service that you're doing now with the leasing. Okay? However, if you look at what's red down here, this is a usage only contract. So the Q60 reflects if you guys maintain those volumes that you're doing today, you can expect us to spend $260. Okay? But the way it would work is the lease payment would say 144.19. And then it would say zero allowance for color, zero allowance for mono. And you simply pay for what you do over a given timeframe. And that could be monthly, quarterly, every six months, annually, however you guys want to do it. So you're not paying for it because you're not utilizing, you're not getting charged rolling. Okay? Any questions on that? I won't bore you too much, but the next page is a picture of the new device. And then if you turn to the next page, I don't care who you're with, you better have a good service team. Okay? So currently in the sales room, we have 29 service techs. Their average tenure with Toshiba is 24 years. Okay? What you're looking at here is based on the nation. Okay? For example, if you walk over to the machine and says, I need a new drone. Call our number, has our equipment ID, you get a lot of person in the United States. Hey, what's, how can I help you today? What's the problems? They'll ask you the equipment ID. Here's my equipment ID, what's the problem? It says I need a new drone. Who's the contact? Hours of operation. Thank you very much. Soon as you hang up, they call the local service tech, they have one hour to call you back. On-site repair is four hours or less. Remote is two hours or less. They don't physically have to come out. They can, they can do it if you're often running faster to help with your service tech. Any questions on that?
No.
Another thing that I wanted to let you know is we have an app that will report meters to us automatically and shipping tonnage to you. We're almost there where it's going to place a service call for you so everything I just said you wouldn't have to do. It's just going to notify the service bank to come out. Okay? Good with that part?
Yes.
The next one, it's just the peace of mind here for you. We have our total quality committee. It's an assembly, just like vehicles. Once in a while, one might stick through and it should go. If that happens throughout the term of the lease, we give you one of equal or greater value. If we can't fix it for more than two days, save that. One of equal or greater value. We don't sit here ripping apart, fix it in your office there and we take it out of here again. I think it's happened twice since I've been with Toshiba, which is coming up in six years. Next page is managed print service. You guys don't have FM mod running right now. I know that you have desktop printers in here. So what I'll be able to do is look at that every quarter and go, hey, you're printing a lot to this little HP and the cartridges are killing you. So either you let us manage it because we can save you 20% and you got a service contract on that, or we say, hey, move it over to the copier. Because there's different things. You guys have it for normal print right now. You can do a private print where you walk up there and release it, you have to decode it, it comes out. You can do a whole print where you walk up there, you release it, it comes out. If you have a big job, you can do a scheduled print.
Like for the access, for Shelley.
Yes, and the assessment notices.
Just load the paper up, say schedule it at midnight and it'll be ready for you in the morning. Yep, I use it all the time.
Wouldn't have to come up here in my pajamas, I can see you.
Well, you don't have to bring your laptop in and fire it up and just grab it off the copier immediately. We talked about e filing, which is basically a file cabinet on a machine that can store common documents if you wanted to. If you wanted to free up an office that's full of files, you can scan them in there, name and report, tax statements, applications, whatever you want. I'd be the one to show them what you had to do. Okay? Next page, because our service provider talked about that, but I wanted to let you know, and I think we talked about this earlier, Jennifer, is we do other things outside of copiers and printers. And a lot of cities and townships are moving towards digital signage, right? Schools inside the cafeteria. We sell all that stuff too and it's part of our. So as you grow, that changes. Because I know this is one of the hottest real estate areas in the state of Michigan. Because I know Marine City's experienced it, Chinatown, Chinatown County experienced it. I should have bought coffee up 26 miles.
Yes, you should have.
So that's what I have for you as far as that. So basically you can get into a new machine for about $60 more and just get it serviced alone right now. Any questions?
Is the machine and all the material that it keeps for you secure?
Yes.
Is that issues?
Yes, I mean, it's all security levels whatsoever, from the OT to FERC.
Otherwise, no hack, because.
No. We have Toshiba's in the White House. And I can send you any white paper or whatever you want to see on that. But yes, you're right. I mean, that's a concern people have and it's all security application.
The other thing is, this is not directly related, but is Omnia stable? It was recently purchased by a private equity firm, true?
I don't know that part, but you know.
I mean, it was owned by a much larger general purchasing aberration. I mean, purchased by Kim, Horace Green.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about that, but as far as I know.
Sometimes there are shakeups when those things happen. This was a couple of years ago.
Because I know National IP and Use Communities is what Omnia took over to make it Omnia. Yeah, I haven't had anybody come back to me and say, hey, that contract is null and void now or anything like that. So, and we'd never come back and say, hey, now you're going to get an allowance from us because you can't ultimately lease. They made sure that the paper was signed outside of the lease on a sales order. You're in good hands and you can call around if you want to. I have a good reputation, so. Any else, I'll let you guys get back to your stuff for. If you have questions out there, leave them just email me and I can answer them as well.
Do you have your contact information? Thank you very much.
That's on the email as well. Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Keep on moving on with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Colleen, can we get in about the Omnia? What we, yes. So Colleen and I had a Zoom meeting with Haley, who is our Omnia rep. And she went through some of the things, some of the companies that we can do business with.
And we both heard who we already do business with. So that means better prices for our contacts already.
And basically, the way she described it is she's going to do the late work. Find us suppliers that are in the Omnia program, you know, that they're locked into like the lowest rate. And we can go through that if we want. And, and she get a bid for us and bring it to us. And if we don't like it, she'll find somebody else. Just keep going, so we're happy with what we do. So.
It saves us a lot of time. Yeah, she's got the expertise and the context.
Right. So like for the addition, we wouldn't even have to put a bid package up. She would do all that for us.
Mm-hmm.
We'll save us time and money. So there's that. And then you guys can go to the website.
You mean a bid page for just to see what we want on the addition or?
Basically, we say, we have to come up with a budget. This is what we want to spend on flooring. This is what we want to spend on windows. This is what we want to spend on the roof. And we taught her. And she'll go to her suppliers, and she's the Michigan, our Michigan rep. So she has dealings with a lot of the companies in Michigan. And she'll, you know, we'll tell her the specs that we want, and she'll give us the bids. And we can say, yes, we want that one. Now let's, you know, we want to look for something else.
This is contractors or just suppliers?
I think it's both.
Well, our main contractor, he hires out his subcontractors, okay? So he hires out the painters. Who do the painters use? Painters use Sherwin-Williams. So we, we ask, this is what we want, this is the quantity, give us a bid from Sherwin-Williams.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, this is the flooring we want. We already know that the last time we bought this flooring in the basement, we got it from Home Depot. And we paid such and such, and we got it on sale, such and such. We go back into our, she'll go back into Home Depot, who's under her umbrella of contractors. This is the flooring we want. This is the price we paid the last time. Can you get us a price for this? It saves the contractor asking about, and we get the product that we want.
Okay, good.
So do we want to talk about the printer? Do we want to do something with it today?
Are you ready to do something with it today?
It's essential.
We need to do something because it's on its last leg. It really isn't.
Yes, it's on its last leg, and we no longer have Craig's in it, so.
Right.
So I'm going to say we make a motion to accept this proposal for the Toshiba... I bet. The Toshiba thirty-two-five AC.
Mm-hmm.
With the total monthly investment of two hundred and sixty dollars. And that's based on the Omni app price.
Support.
How much?
Okay. We have a motion and support to accept the Toshiba Studio thirty-two-five AC month, total monthly investment for two hundred and sixty dollars. Any questions? We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kabinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one would be the Omni app?
That's what we just did.
It's what we just did.
All right.
Now you're going to go to B, which is the standard.
Okay.
Oh, I see, because you did that, I see. So you're basically moving stuff down.
Okay. All right, next one is the Consumers Energy person.
Well, once we had a dream. It was a nice dream while it lasted. We were, I was tasked to get a vote of the Consumers Energy people who own the huge acreage directly across the street. What we were interested in was a very small portion like that directly across from the township hall. Our grand scheme was to lease it from consumers, clear it, drain it, gravel it, and have it for extra parking on election days.
Containing how many rough acres?
About...
Yeah?
About four hundred and twenty-five feet by six hundred. You don't even bother to write it down, my dear, because...
They're like four acres.
Yes, about four acres.
Say now, it's a square foot and it's by forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. That's giving you eight acres.
Yes, yeah. But in doing so, I talked to the road commission about a culvert, which would be necessary. I talked to two contractors about clearing the area, tarping it, laying down gravel. We're up now to about thirty thousand dollars.
Do you have to do an environmental study?
Oh, I, I don't even care. Because, I'm sorry, but for two days of voting.
Every two years.
Every two years, it just was not feasible. What might be feasible, because our, our problem was the overflow parking that happens two, you know, one or two times a year. And I don't like, I don't like the idea of people walking after dark on that road to get anywhere.
And you know what's coming with the early voting? It might not be as easy.
Exactly. But, and November, it's dark by sixth third. So if we need, if we're really concerned about this, if it's nasty weather, whatever, whatever, we can get Casco Rentall to give us big floodlights, and we can flood Meldrum Road for a day or so in the evening. So people can safely walk on the road and get to the doors for the voting. But I'm afraid, my estimation, I stopped at about thirty-five thousand dollars. I went, this is just, this is not feasible. So I thank you for your patience and for reading over this contract. I spoke to the lawyer. She said, this contract does not favor us. We would be paying fifteen hundred dollars a year in rent. And then re-graveling or graveling, and it just, it is worth it.
We might have to give Beth Coleman some cookies.
Cookies, yes, we definitely have to get, yeah, we definitely have to.
You could run a shuttle service from the park over there over here.
Was that? Well, that's, that was my second thought, is we could shuttle. Yeah, we could shuttle from, from St. James, even if we had. I don't think the voting has ever been that, that intense.
In Curry.
Twenty-one, twenty was not.
Yeah, that was, yes. It was, it was COVID, and it was inclement weather.
Right.
And we, and our tent didn't hold up well. But, you know, that's the responsibility of being a voter, you know? Good times, bad times.
They were all good sports. People were buying donuts, you know? And so we had a vaccine.
It was wonderful. But so I thank you for your patience and reading over this contract. But I think it's a little out of our budget at the moment. And we'll just have to make do with what we have.
It was a really good try though.
Well, you know, they're, they're...
You don't ask, you never know.
Well, you never know, you know? And if it, if it weren't for the fact that, that we had to, what really got me was not the clearing so much. I could find somebody to clear it probably for free. But the, the contractors that I talked to said, really, the best thing to do would be flatten it, you know? Put that tarp down. And then I can just imagine the cost of the, of the limestone or the gravel. That just blew it right out of the park. So sorry, folks, you're just going to have to walk, look both ways before you cross the street, okay?
Or both hands and feet.
Or both hands and feet.
We're coming. That's right.
Thank you though.
Thank you for talking.
Any other questions on that? Okay, B is administrative assistants to the planning commission?
Again, I hope you took the time to read over the administrative assistant to the planning commission, assigned duties, et cetera, et cetera. Gina and I worked with Brenda to formulate this. If you have any questions, I, we would entertain them. The gist of this, the bottom line of this all is simply to condense and simplify the procedures necessary and to pull in all members of the planning commission, the building board of appeals, anyone that needs to be inside a loop of information. And our process is trying to solidify the information going from place to place. And we really think that this job needs an administrative assistant to the planning commission. And so we've given you the duties, and you can look those over if you have any questions. And we hope to give this position to Brenda, who has been doing quite a bit of this already, and for years on end, really. But this defines it a little bit better. And we have a few additional duties. And it's, it's all a coordination of efforts. And those efforts are simply to get the information from a starting point to the people who need to see it, and then disperse outward so that we have regular dates and times for draft deadlines, actually, the deadlines that everyone needs for all of this information to go from pillar to post. And we are entrusting that to Brenda Loper or... I almost hate to, to put a name in there because this is a designation of an administrative assistant, who at this time happens to be Brenda Loper, okay? Along with this, if you will, we are submitting a request for a salary and the vacation days.
I think that the vacation days are separate.
It's, it might be separate, but that's coming, okay? So there's a salary attached to this because there is, there's quite a bit of important work to be done. And it's very specific, and it's very timely.
And it's needed.
And, oh, yes, it's very needed.
It's a lot of responsibility.
Oh, it, it really is. And so if you have any questions about the assigned duties, please let us know. But realize that in putting this all together, we would really like it... We, we would like to see it come to fruition.
And it's, and I know the biggest part with this is to keep people on track. The whole party's involved.
Yes.
And that's a big job. And I know Brenda does very good work.
Thanks to this.
When you're talking salary, what are you talking about?
I'm talking twenty-five dollars an hour.
Over and above?
No, over and above, no. Twenty-five dollars an hour.
As that administrative person or with the building department also?
That's, that's, that's her entire salary.
Come by.
But this is, this is extra due. I mean, this doesn't happen every day. But it is timely, and it must happen when it needs to happen. And so twenty-five dollars would be her entire salary for administrative assistant and what she does in the building department.
I mean, from this last summer of experience with the building department, at the point that I was not thrown around, but given bad advice, when it could have been settled so, so quick with a zoning fee, where Mr. Stevens threw shotgun all across the bow of my boat, and that's what all that legal stuff started with. Because I never got to answer what I needed.
Perhaps this will aid that, you know? Perhaps it will. Brenda has...
Then perhaps it won't, so.
Well, let's see how it works. Brenda has an innate ability to pull the right people in at the right time. And she knows if we're talking about the planner, the lawyer, whatever, you know, the assistant to the planner, she has all those numbers. What she has now is the authority given to her by the township board to go ahead and make those connections. So you get the correct information from the correct source.
Right, but this summer I found I didn't get the correct information, and I come out of that building department office.
We took our instructions from those who give us instructions. The building department clerks don't have latitude. We follow directions.
Where did you get your instructions from then?
I don't think we want to relitigate that.
Let's go forward.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you don't experience that again, Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
We're trying to move this forward.
And Brenda's very stickler for detail, so.
So let me just give you this one paragraph. This is one paragraph from the assigned duties. And that would be to coordinate meetings between an applicant, their representatives, the planner, if possible, engineer, planning commission chairperson, building official, and herself to review the requirements by the planning commission, revisions, and to confirm any approvals by St. Clair County entities, the road commission, the drain commission, the health department, and follow-up meetings if they are necessary in coordinating the meetings with the above referenced individuals. That's a lot of work. And that is going to be in one person's office, at one person's desk. And she has, as I've heard, where have I heard this? She has a phone and a pen. She will.
And a calendar.
And, and a calendar, which is ever so important because we have specific dates. Specific dates when specific information is needed from all these sources. And it will be corralled, lassoed, and then redistributed to those who need to be informed. Hopefully, that will make planning commissions, make the planning commissioners more aware, certainly more responsible. And so that is the gist of the administrative assistant duties. That is the, the salary. And I would like that to come to your attention and be approved immediately.
I have a couple of questions, real quick. And maybe I missed it in here. Who is Brenda going to report to? I just wanted...
The board, I just said. Oh.
The board.
So, but on a day-to-day basis, if she needs, she's going to probably need someone to direct her.
She would have, I mean, it would be up to Brenda who, who she has to pull in.
Brenda?
I don't really think, and with all due respect to each of you, that I have been doing this through two supervisors' terms. Since Bill's passing.
Right.
I have done everything that's on the list.
I just want to make sure you have questions.
So I feel that it's, if, if this is going to be, and I think the last paragraph of my duties, the very last short paragraph there. I think that you all trust me the way I, the way I trust you. So I would, if I had a question, and I think I even mentioned this to Colleen, if there was really any doubt in my mind that I might be overstepping or maybe need a second thought here, but I've been doing this, and I'm very confident that I would never take anything upon myself without touching base with the planner.
Right.
Or the planning commission.
And I'm not even talking about that, but just if there was a, for instance, if you needed, if you need one person...
Well, I would say Gina is the liaison to the planning commission. So she would be the person that would...
I just wanted to know.
She would act on your behalf.
That's who, that's who you would talk to. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That's what I would say. Gina is the, the point person between... Anything that the board designates should go through Gina to the planning commission. Not anyone else. I mean, this has been my experience. When Joe was the secretary to the planning commission, he brought the board's concerns.
Right.
The planning commission's concerns to the board. And that, to me, would be the same thing that Gina would do.
Correct. And that leads me to my next comment. And I, I'm going to try to put this nicely. But I think at previous meetings, Joe, you've taken over. And I think it's important for our residents to, to see that, I don't know how I want to write this. But the planning commission is a commission that is a representative of us. And if you're there as the supervisor, I don't want people to think you're intimidating the planning commission to vote a certain way or, or do something a certain way. And, just let me finish. The last meeting that was held in the basement, I watched it. And that meeting was a mess anyway. But you were, somebody asked, one of the audience members asked something to the planning commission, and you just jumped in right there. And I, I don't... you just jumped in right there and I, I don't think that should be, should happen. So as, as the planning commission liaison or representative, I think it should come from Gina.
Yes, and also I watched the same meeting and Gina was present as the liaison, but Joe directed a question about the zoning ordinance to the planner and my thought was, well, does the rest of the board know that he's wanting, you know, perhaps an adjustment to the ordinance book? Wouldn't that come from the liaison as the representative from the board?
Right.
So I think there has been a lot of chaos of recent.
And that's why we wanted to do this.
And so I just think that in an attempt to bring everything to be handled by the least amount of people necessary.
Yes.
That will effectuate the job more efficiently, sometimes more quickly, sometimes not because we're depending on our professionals.
Right.
I can't designate or say I need this, they work for us, but they know more than all of us, so I rely on them. But as far as the list where the meeting dates and the draft deadline, that has been a real, real breakdown. If I understand correctly and Gina, you can confirm this, there was no agenda at the last planning commission meeting.
Can I, can I comment on that also?
Sure.
And that would be one of my concerns. Who is going to be responsible for the agenda? That should be the planning commission secretary, correct?
Yep, well, that's what he's getting paid more for.
Okay, so last month, and I told this to the board already, I got an email on Friday at 5:00. We are closed on Fridays. I happen to be checking my email because of election business and that was sent to me. At my work email that I checked at home, had I not checked that, that agenda would not have been posted in the window because we were closed on Monday for a holiday and that meeting was not going to happen and it had to happen because it was a public hearing and there was notices that went out to, to the property owners. So we need to make sure that we have, in, in all this, the agenda. Who does it when it gets posted?
I, I'm hoping to speak with Gina and Keith to determine who is responsible for the agenda. I want to speak with that person, with Gina, because here's the deadline.
Right.
That these have to be in my hands.
Yes.
CC to you.
Yes.
Because you are responsible for the posting. I'm the information gatherer.
Right.
But I will make absolutely certain that you have what you need so there's no deadlines missed or...
No doubt about that.
Or, or the commissioners in the dark about what their, what their order business is.
Right, because they have to have an agenda because if, if they get a board packet without an agenda, they don't see everything.
Well, they did have the board packet, but they had no agenda, so. And, and the $25 is a $3 per hour increase. I currently make $22 an hour and so I know the site plan reviews, special land use, the ZBA variances that come before Dan and his body don't happen every day or every month, but these, these things do.
Well, and there's a lot of times when that's all you're working on and...
Right, and thank God for Katie. Thank God for Katie.
I was just going to say, well, Katie still works here, doesn't she?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Would you ever change stepping her up to that position?
Well, right now, I think, because Brenda's been here so long and she's familiar, but Katie works right alongside her and she's very...
So Brenda's worked with two supervisors.
I don't care if she worked with twenty.
Well, I, I do care. I mean, that, that's, that's called institutional knowledge and that's what she has.
Right, it sounds like you want to get that plank passed tonight soon as possible. But I'm seeing...
I, I gave to them, I gave to them their board packets. They had their board packets they had to look over, so I'm, I'm comfortable in asking the board to do this tonight. I take it that you've read your board packets?
Absolutely. I make a motion that we go ahead and approve this position of administrative assistant to the planning commission, to Brenda Loeb, at a rate of $25 an hour.
I'll support. Okay, we have motion support to approve Brenda Loeb and the assigned duties as administrative assistants of the planning commission for a $3 pay increase to her current wage.
On that issue of administrator, right, first you're going to make $25 be in the building, for example, it's only on the issue of administrator.
It's her wage.
An overall change in increase because of an overall change in their increasing duties and responsibility.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Do you want to do immediately?
Immediately.
Effective immediately. Well, effective February 16th.
For the pay, Erin, for the pay. It'll start on next week, which is...
No, no. Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
All right, motion carries. Okay, C is Brenda Loeb, additional paid vacation time since consideration for designation administrative assistance of the planning commission with additional hourly compensation brought before the board, this request comes to you separately. I respectfully request an additional two days of paid vacation time to my current 14 days to 16 days annual. Thank you for your consideration, this matter.
It'll just be item D.
All right.
I'm going to request an additional day.
I'll support.
I, I'd like to thank each and every one of you. We've had some difficult days and probably more to come.
Maybe not with you, but...
No, we're all in together, but I believe that bringing together information will be very helpful to the planning commission and ultimately the ZBA, but we don't see as much ZBA as, as we do.
Unfortunately.
So thank you all.
Okay. We made the motion for the vacation based whose force is it? We have motion supporting questions. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, this would be E, Katie McCall pay increasing request.
Can we speak on that before, because I don't know what Katie is asked for. But Mark, Mr. Marker?
I'm listening.
If you've ever been right about anything, you've been right about your comments about Katie. I don't know how much she's asking you for, but I can tell you, she is invaluable to me.
She's invaluable to all.
She is, well, more invaluable, she is so wonderful. She's allowed me to do what you just approved for me because the building department is no longer a one-girl office. And I don't believe it ever will be.
It can't be, it's crazy.
But she would handle it like I have done and probably better and faster because I've got 50 years on her. So I don't know what she's asking you for, but I would say if you had the latitude to give her even a little more than she's asking, she's worth it.
Chesco Board, Chesco Board of Trustees, I'm writing to request increase in my hourly pay along with the duties of building department, obtaining the additional duties such as the weekly sign-up pages, PowerPoint presentations for board meet and update and maintain the township website. I'm requesting a $1.50 hour increase to my pay. I appreciate your consideration. My request, sincerely, Katie McCall.
What is her hourly hourly wage?
$1.50.
$1.50.
I make the motion to approve the request for a $1.50 an hour increase in pay for Miss McCall.
Support.
Okay, motion to, to give Katie McCall a $1.50 hourly increase in support.
Can we do $2?
I, I would go for that. Want to make your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll support him, I have a motion.
Okay, for $2 an hour. Any question? Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, item, there would be F. Okay, two Chesco, this is Linda Team.
Kelly, can Kelly read it?
Sure.
Since it's from her.
This is from Shelley Baummeister, who's the assessor and myself. It's a request for a $2024 salary for Linda Team, who is the deputy assessor and the deputy treasurer. We are requesting an adjustment in salary for our deputy in the amount of $24 per hour. This year Linda will be required to complete an assessing reform support certification class, making her compliant with Michigan law. As the township grows, Linda's organizational skills are much appreciated by both of us. The collection of taxes has run very smoothly over the 20-year span that Linda has been assisting and her communication with residents on information needed for assessing and tax is invaluable. We are satisfied with the number of vacation days negotiated and we thank you for your consideration in this matter.
So moved. Support.
I have a comment, I think Linda is fantastic in her job for all the jobs, she's been inside the...
She's been doing it long enough.
Okay, we have motion support to, to amount $24 to our deputy assessor, Linda Team. Okay, any other questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, Vicki Hoff pay increase request.
Do you want me to read it? You want me to read it? Dear Board of Trustees, I am ready to ask for your consideration regarding an increase in my hourly pay. I have been working for the township since July of 2020 as deputy clerk. I think Jennifer and I make a great clerking team, especially with all the election changes in the past year. We work endlessly to make sure that our elections are run correctly and with integrity. We continually strive to educate ourselves and our residents with new, with all new election legislation. This year is going to be a challenging year with all of the added duties of elections, especially with the early voting center. The clerk's office will be working 18 days straight to facilitate the early voting center, election duties and election day. This has never been a duty that clerks and deputy clerks have ever had to do, plus we must still do all of our other duties. With that being said, I humbly ask that you consider raising my hourly rate from $22 an hour to $23 an hour. I thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Victoria Hoff. And I would like to say that I could not do my job without Vicki. We work very well together, we think alike, we're very organized and we just work great together.
We appreciate that.
And this, all the new voting laws, they're, it's, it's very stressful, very stressful and very challenging, yes. With that said, I would actually like to see her go from 22 to 24.
Make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion support to increase Vicki Hoff's hourly rate from $22 to $24 an hour.
And I don't know if we want to do this separate, but I actually would also like to ask for, I put at your desk, I wrote a little note here, I don't know if we want to do it separate or together, but I don't think it matters.
No.
So we'll just do it together. Okay, so I put this is to the Board of Trustees from myself. As most of you know, in November 2022, Prop 22-2 was passed by the Michigan voters. This brought forth many election law changes and additions that are now part of our state of Michigan constitution. The clerk's office has been working non-stop for the last few months as the state continues to cast down last-minute changes in addition to ensure that these new election laws be in place for our voters. One of the big changes is we now have nine days of early voting. This early voting starts Saturday, February 17th, 2024 and continues through the end of the day on Sunday, February 25th, 2024. The clerk's office will be working a total of 18 days straight. I know that's, I think we've said that three times, but...
He's probably can't remind me every word.
Most of these days will be at least nine hours long for the clerks, with the exception of election day, which will probably be about 16 hours long. I could not imagine doing this without the help and dedication from Vicki. She's willing to help me with whatever I need as well as helping all of the other departments in the township as they need. Vicki takes the initiative to take on many difficult tasks without even being asked. With that being said, I am requesting an election stipend for my deputy clerk, Victoria Hoff, of $750 per election. I greatly appreciate your time and consideration. Sincerely, Jennifer Anderson.
Assistant, it's a clerk.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So we have, okay, there to increase the pay from $22 to $24 an hour and to add a stipend of $750. Roll call vote.
Per election, yeah. Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay. Okay, so where did Yania, or no?
Yes, Omnia's done, so now we're just at H.
Yeah, project manager for addition, like we did when we did the most recent building addition eight years ago, they hired Roland and I asked him if he's willing to do that, he's interested in this, being the project manager for this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why did you ask him before we discussed it as a board?
Well, I, I just...
I understand that, but if we as a board decided that we don't want to go with Roland and you've already asked him, that's kind of a difficult situation.
Well, I told him, I told him, I told him, would he be interested?
Yeah, I don't know that that's such a horrible thing to do.
I didn't say that.
That's really a...
And then when that makes...
A dead ringer yet, but...
When that being said too, if you do this Omnia stuff, is he going to be able to do that with Omnia?
Yeah, he's going to need that.
Because that, if, if that's going to save the taxpayers a lot of money, I think we need to go that route with the Omnia. I mean, we need to look into it at least.
And would he be willing to, well, I...
I, I...
I have no problem with doing that, I'm just saying it would have been nice for us to discuss it as a board before.
Should we wait until we see what Omnia's role is really going to be because I'm not really quite clear whether they're going to actually provide project management as well as purchasing and other kinds of...
Yeah.
It's not clear.
Okay, and who's going to look into that?
I'll look into it. Is it Omnia?
Do you have...
I know, I think really it's more purchasing, don't you?
I don't know, I mean, they have all kinds of...
Because you'd be hiring a contractor. Contractors hire subcontractors. We can, with this Omnia, we can advise the main contractor that this is the product that we want, this is the price we can get. If you're subcontracting a flooring guy, send him here. That way he doesn't come with, you know, three different quotes. That's what Omnia's all about.
Right.
So once we get a contractor, half the job is done.
Right.
And the, and the subcontracting prices, we, we look to Omnia for that. Project manager, I guess we wait and to see.
Yeah, I'd like to see more of what we expect the project manager to really do in this case with Omnia on board and with a new project because I'm not sure what they do.
So maybe we have to work.
What their role is. You can hire project managers.
Right, right.
That are available.
And I have no problem with...
I'm not sure what in this case their...
I think it should just be...
I wouldn't know their responsibilities, we probably bring someone on the board.
You want out contact?
They want to know their responsibilities.
I have a contact. I have a contact, so.
Okay. What is the proposed budget for that expansion?
We don't even have that yet.
No?
We have the, we have a rough, I mean, I, I heard it in the wind, but it's not, nothing concrete. I, I heard a construction bid, but that's just for the shell. That's not, that's for rough, yeah, that's, that's for the construction itself. We don't have any, any... We don't have any, any budget yet for.
What size roughly you want in all that?
The what?
Size of it.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, 2,500 square feet, I think it's, it said in our, in our construction.
I don't know if you know, it's a sort of.
That's a high side.
It's sort of an imperative project because we need another hall for voting.
Yeah, right.
That's handicap accessible. So there's a really strong reason to do this right now. Plus, we're on a pace because of the activity.
I think it was 2,500, about 2,500 square feet.
I mean, if a citizen owned this structure, a non-conforming structure, from the center of the road to the front of the building, or the center of the road to the front.
I think we're exempt from all that nonsense.
Pardon me?
We're exempt from all that. We're special.
Government.
Yeah, yeah. That's, we're, we're a government building. It's kind of, you know, what you don't come into with right of eminent domain.
Brain punch, brain punch piece.
See, did you bring any? No, you didn't.
She made homemade ones.
I know.
She tried it yesterday.
You know?
I thought you were going to have two dozen here, but.
I got some too.
I had to work on that.
Call in sick and make them.
No, please don't let her do that.
All right.
Okay, the project.
We're going to call the project manager before we find out what the project is.
Yeah.
All right. MTE conference.
So you guys all got your township Focus magazine? They have a poll write-up about the conference there. So we didn't copy all that because I figured we'd save some trees. But we did, did we put the registration? The registration form there. So if anybody's interested in going, I guess, we need to make a vote on it or let us know. Because I, is it in April to April? And I'm not sure when the, oh, early bird rate is until March 25. This is where the thing? I believe that's in forever six. I would be interested in going.
I would love to take a class defining your township's land use for future land use.
That's our next topic, definitely.
Yeah, because I didn't think the state was just going to certify zoning altogether.
Yeah, there was a, there was a lot of, I was looking through the classes, and there was a lot of interesting classes. They have a lot to pick from. There's a lot of them that are concurrent, so you kind of have to pick one that you want to go to. But there's a lot.
I went to two of these many years ago. They were absolutely wonderful.
Yeah.
And they were just packed with information. Every meal you got to sit with people from other townships and talk to them, wherever it was I remember.
Strategically.
That was really great. It's a great experience to go to, go to the conferences.
So if we want to go, we need to get our registration in?
Yes.
By?
March 25th. March 25th is the early bird rate, so I would say that would come in the, yeah.
Okay.
So we make a motion, anyone wants to go? Township, okay? Do we need a motion on that?
I think that motion is supported.
Okay, we have motion support. If any of the township board members would like to go to the MTE conference. Okay, Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, MTE Government Security Academy.
This one, they had flares about this in the Township Focus magazine and on emails, and I never really looked into it, but I, I took the time to read into it, so I put the brochure in here. And I would actually be interested in signing up for that. It is, it's kind of like a little college course. There's 28 credit hours in foundation courses, 24 credit hours in boardsmanship courses, and then 18 elective hours. And some of the things are land use, designing your township's future, which would be good with the master plan, township finances, managing your township team, board rules and relations, how boards make decisions, strategic planning for townships, linking with the community. I would be interested in signing up for it. It's $35 to enroll, and you can do it in a year, you can do it in 10 years. And each class, I believe they said, is 100. It's $100 for a half-day course or 125 for a full-day course. So I would like to sign up for it. I don't know if anybody else would want to do it with me.
Yeah, I mean, when we have to decide.
You don't have to, and you can just, you can enroll in it. It's $35. And I think I read too, if you take a class, you can just sign up for the class, and then up to six months later, you can use it towards credit to.
Okay, is these courses online or?
Yes, you can do it. I think it said you can do it all online, but you have to at least do two classes in person. And then some of those classes are at the professional retreats, at the conferences, so you can do those if you're going there anyway.
I have to continue supporting the officers and any other folks that are appropriate in getting education. Things are changing, and we have better educated officers than we have been in years. And I think it's something we should do. It's cheaper than the price of.
So we make a motion, any member of the board that'd like to enroll in this, will support them? Okay. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to that?
I will.
Okay, we have motion support. We have motion support for anyone who'd want to enroll into the Michigan Township Association Governance Academy. Okay, Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, Road Commission, work orders. Okay, we have the first one here. Now, if you guys want to do them all in one big group here, room and one big group, or go in room individually?
I think they need to be individualized.
Okay. Okay, the first one is this project description. It is shoulder patching on paved roads, on local roads in Casco Township. So it's, the amount of it is $2,607.
Before we get into this, the meat of this, Cunningham was talking about when we were discussing the budget concerns about.
How these add up to 190, well, last year, let's just say, you add all of these up, it's $233,989. Last year's road millage was $197,000. Where do we pull the rest of the money? From the general fund? Or does any of this match money?
Well, we have on the one section, the one at the end is a match money. But we could hold off on this till.
No, I mean, if we need to order this, he needs to get the, he needs to get his figures in. I'm just asking you where the money's coming from. Because we certainly do need our limestone haul.
And then here's another question. Let me just find the budget stuff. We have. On your revenue and expenditure report that you pulled at the end of, I don't think we have any road commission expense done. We have between, between account number 8 to 8, which is contracted road millage, we have $1,085 left in that one. And then in account 830, contracted road services, we have $25,000 left in that one. So what orders do we still have outstanding that they haven't done yet from the 23?
That I don't know. We could hold off on this? Mike was just wanting to get first in line on the.
Well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, to get first in line.
So what I'm saying is if there's $30,000 left over from this, because this, this is right now. Our fiscal year ends March 31st. So are any of these going to come due before March 31st? We still have money in this current budget?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think he indicated it will be after the 1st of April.
Okay. Okay.
Then I say we go ahead and approve these with that $30,000 left. And we might have to pull some from the general fund.
Well, if you look at Joe's proposed budget, depends on what you do to change it. For the account 8 to 8, the millage one, you have it $773,000. And then the contracted road commission, 830, you have it $90,000. So that would be $260,000.
Yeah. All right, and so these are 233. And this is, this is the major obligation that we have. This is our job.
Right.
Grabbling the roads.
Right.
So we have to get the gravel down. We have to get the chloride ordered.
Right.
And if you want to do the road patching on the side.
Why, Mike, why we're having them in February, Mike just wants to get his township's there first in line.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We want to get them first. All right, let's just approve them.
Okay, the first one is shoulder patch on paved, local paved road in Casco Township for $2,607.
Support, or, sorry.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support for the patching. Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is mo, 1 to 5 inch, 1 to 5 foot cut after the road commission mo. So first pass on local roads in Casco Township known as to be done by August 1st or is directed by the township supervisor. That's for a cost of $5,760.
So moved.
Support.
We have motion support for the, for the mo for $5,760. Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes. Motion carries. Okay, next one is to apply two applications of 21% chloride at 2,000 gallons per mile approximately 42 miles of local road, plus one extra pass at 1,000 gallons per mile down the centers of the north and south roads that are receiving the limestone. Approximately 18 miles of the first application only. So approximately 186,000 gallons of 21% chloride. The cost is $53,253.52.
So moved.
Support.
We have motion support for the order of the chloride for $53,253.52. Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next one, contractor will haul 228 limestone on north and south local roads in Casco Township. See the attached thing for the roads they're going to be doing. Approximately 7,590 tons of 228 limestone. At $22, $22.71 per ton, the amount of $172,316.90.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to purchase limestone at $172,316.90. Roakall.
Oh, sorry. Do I sound like some overlord or not?
A little bit. Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay. The next one is a match grant here. This contractor will haul approximately 440 ton on Hessin Road between Division Road and St. Clair Highway. Approximately 350 ton on Hessin Road between St. Clair Highway and Putty Cut. 495 ton on Hessin between Putty Cut Road and Lindsay Road. And the road commission will haul approximately 45 ton at a dead end of Lopetit Road with a county truck. The total project is $30,999.15. Amount due from the township is $21,699.40. The amount due for the limestone program from the county is $9,299.25.
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to do the match grant. The amount from the township will, due from the township is $21,699.40. Roakall vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Get Mike in here to sign. I'll sign and get him with Mike tomorrow. Okay. Next one is the annual meeting. We have the annual, annual road commission meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 28. We have the 3:30 to 5 o'clock timeframe. This will be same as all years where they have a, the board will discuss, the road commission board will discuss what's going on in the county. And then we go, the individual townships go on a breakout, and their department heads come in and discuss various matters. I go every year. I think it's important. We get to discuss issues, especially on some stuff on the bridges and that. We need to be discussing that on the culvert, at least, I should say. So anyone who wishes to join me on that date? Do you want?
I will go.
Good. Okay. Next one. Is Resolution 2020, 2024. I'm not sure what the next one in the resolution book is.
She just happens to have the resolution book. She's a handy deputy.
Seven.
Okay. Okay, this would be 2024-07. Okay, authorization for expenditure funds and excessive statutory maintenance limits. But this is they're doing maintenance on the Peters drain. Instead of doing the work in two years, they only can spend a certain amount of money. They're wanting to do it in one year. It's not going to raise anybody's assessment or cost of. It's not gonna raise anybody's assessment or cost of, they just wanna take care of this work in one year due to the flooding that's been occurring on people's lives.
So the people who are being assessed for the Peters drain are not going to see any assessment costs?
No.
Where exactly is the Peters drain?
I have to look on my map.
It's in the southwest corner of the township. It goes in the China.
Southeast, you mean?
Yeah, southeast, excuse me.
Southeast.
That way.
Melbourne Road, that way.
That way.
Yeah, it's down near Springboard Road.
Oh, that's me. Yes, go ahead.
No, no, no.
Yeah, so they, the road, the drain commission could only spend a certain amount on a drain per year. And they're wanting to us, and China townships get the same thing, so they can do all this work in one year instead of two years.
They need a resolution for that?
Yeah, I guess so, either.
Have to have it as quickly as they can get it done. So did we make motion on it? Then I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to pass resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven. We have support.
Us support.
Okay, we have motion support to pass resolution.
This, we don't pay for this at all, but?
Well, we'll get an assessment for our portion of it, but doesn't increase on it.
So we're going to pay our portion in one year instead of two years?
No, we'll pay over two years period.
But they're just gonna do the work in one year because it's flooding.
So there'll be no acceleration in the payment that the?
All right, that's fine. That's fine.
When the work is done, is that what?
Right.
I appreciate that.
No surprise, no any surprise.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and support to pass resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven. Okay, roll call vote or eight.
It's on the back of this. What, what is this on the back of this?
Oh, just.
No, 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 turn that over.
One more.
Here. Read that first one.
Date by which completion required is eight December two thousand twenty-three.
So it's down there?
What's that?
It's twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, they just brought this to me last week.
But what could, what could the signature of the dates here?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, you mean the dates at the bottom there? Yeah, I don't know.
They signed it last year, but it says the date by which completion is required is eight December eighth, twenty twenty-three.
We're a little behind.
Look back.
I talked to him about it when.
When we got to the, got to the county.
Yeah, well, we see it in the.
They did, I'll have an explanation for that. It's kinda weird.
Yeah. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, this is for the bid proposal, so. But so when people probably put bids on it. Okay. Okay, we have a motion support to, for resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, motion carries.
You're gonna second that?
Yeah. I think it's just the work they.
Just name share, not me.
All right, next one is the warning siren prevent and maintenance agreement. Okay, right here. This is a thing we have for the maintenance of the siren here. We have two sirens in Casco Township and they're asking four hundred and twenty-five dollar per site for an annual for eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I just ask, were we aware of this when they installed these sirens, that there would be a maintenance?
Yeah.
So what if we say no, then why? I mean, that should've been something that was in the original agreement.
We heard it was a gift from Clay Township.
Or the, it was from the county, didn't the county?
Yeah, county. What had happened with, while we got the alert sirens, every board commissioner, board commissioner got some arable money to spend.
Right.
Ours, Commissioner Rushing, we used to overlay St. Clair Highway for a mile. Commissioner Van den Bosch there wanted warning sirens for the county. That's what he spent.
Maybe his office is gonna be paying for the main.
Want, want to hold off on this and ask questions?
I.
We'll read a whole lot.
Again, though, what if, what if we say no, then why?
Yeah, come and get your siren.
Right, it's loud anyway.
I'll, I'll call them up. I'll ask some questions.
Close call now?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have a, the next one on the aisle is board review alternate. We're allowed two alternates on a board review. I'd like to appoint Chuck Gibson as an alternate to the Casco Township Board Review for terms starting on February fourteen, twenty twenty-four, and in February, December thirty-third, twenty twenty-four.
I make that motion?
Okay, we have motion support to appoint Chuck Gibson as alternate for review. And he was in here talking about the gypsy mob, so he's very, he's been involved with the community.
Did I meet him?
Oh, yeah.
He was at, he was at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so he's. Okay, all in favor of appointing Chuck Gibson as board review alternate? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have Cornwall property appraisals. I called around, okay, as we know, the Cornwall family was asking a lot of money for that property. And I got some quotes. One, Tracy Nesbit, they're the ones who did the appraisal on the original park property. The other three, Eric Schmidt, Lawrence Allen, and Allen and Allen, they're all recommended by Six River. They had done work for them. I asked them if they'd be willing to do appraisals on the property, on the two different zoning of the one that's in R two, approximately three acres and the rest of the property and recreation open space. So I'd like to get the boards, is this something that we would like to investigate or hold off on?
I'm.
I'm not interested.
I'm not interested either. Personally, I think we have the, the one park that we're working on developing. We don't have enough money to buy this property and develop that park. So if we buy this property, then we have a park that isn't even the target, like a third over the way done. And then most of this is wetlands. What are we gonna do with the wetlands?
Yeah, about a third of the property is wetlands.
I, I don't think we have the money in the park to do that.
We, you're right, we don't. But we do have those vacant pieces on St. Clair Highway.
It's still not gonna pay for, it was like eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, no, I agree, that amount is.
Right.
They're, I mean, insane.
So I don't think we should go any further, but that's my, you know, my, 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 my interest.
Okay. So, all right, so. All right, so my question is to you, if we wanna hold off on this right now. Do you want us, the township to apply for the trust fund, we didn't get it this past year. The trust fund grant of taking it back to the river, the road back to the river. Do you want me to re, the township to reapply for that?
Yes.
On the existing.
On the existing.
Part of it, yes.
Yes.
Does that cost us anything?
Well, what, what happened, I've had, we'd have to have a resolution at the next meeting. Pam says it wouldn't take much to, cause all the work was done, we just reapply.
Fine, so you could put efforts into that part.
Yes, I would rather see that.
Okay, so I'll draw, I'll get a resolution done up and I'll head.
At the next meeting. What, have you found out how we're going to get repaid for the grant, the money that we've already?
Yeah, I'm working on that today.
Okay.
What it is, is the two pay apps we already did. I'm gonna be putting notes into the system tomorrow for reimbursement. And I wanted to see if you need to do the all amount, you know, through the legal note, you could do partial.
So whatever we already paid out, then we will get reimbursed.
Yep. You may pick up, we'll be quite a bit on that today, so.
For the record, I'd just like to state that I think looking away from this opportunity to buy that land is a mistake. I know I'm not, I'm minority one, but I remember we had an opportunity to buy some land right next to the hall many years ago. We passed it up. I regret that ever since, and I don't know why there was no support. And I think this is an unusual opportunity to provide a legacy for people that come here after us. And I think it's an unusual opportunity to preserve wetlands and keep as much nature as we can.
Okay.
So, like that in the record, that's.
The one thing I have to say about these appraisals. If, let's say, they did an appraisal and let's say they, they got, but it's actually experts determine what would be cost that, and they went to the Cornwall family, if they would be willing to negotiate. Six Rivers is willing, if they, we signed the agreement, they're willing to split that property.
And that will also cost us twenty thousand dollars upfront.
Yeah.
Which we don't have.
Well, it'd be altogether, if, if, if it go, it wouldn't be twenty thousand dollars, it'd be like five thousand dollars upfront. But if we were successful in getting a trust fund grant to purchase, let's say we want just the back recreation open space portion of the property, then at the end it would be twenty thousand dollars.
I still say.
I mean.
Let some corporation buy it, use the front three acres to put in a Dairy Queen. And when they realize they've got a backyard full of.
Nothing.
Nothing. Flood plain, et cetera, et cetera. Perhaps we can come back in another five years and make the Dairy Queen an offer to buy the wetlands in the back for considerably less than the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the Cornwall family is asking for.
Well, I think that's a bogus figure and just.
Well, it is bogus figure, but it's.
Anywhere near there, after it's appraised and after the, it's bonded by the conservancy, I don't think eight hundred thousand is really.
Well, I don't think it is.
And I don't think it should deter us, that kind of figure.
Uh, right now, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
That's what we have.
Well, that's, I understand that.
And that's my biggest concern. We have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. We need that for this park.
Yeah.
And yeah, we need to, we need to put the gazebo up. We need to put playground equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
Gazebo, that's, that's part of the, that ought to be going up.
Let, let us, let us create something now that our residents can see and can use. And that property next door is not going anywhere, except down to the river in a flood.
Yeah, but we also have one thing, the recreation open space zoning on the property, that will inhibit a lot of stuff.
That's right. That means, that means that whoever buys that property will be using the, the front three acres will be either taking down that house and all the farms and all the expense in doing that. And then they're going to leave that back park because it's a, it's a recreation open space flood plain. They're not gonna be building anything back there to my estimation. And there may be a future date where we could lease that property if we wanted to for trails or whatever in the dead of summer. And that would appeal to me a whole lot more than forking out money right now. I, you know, I, it's, it's not going anywhere. And it's not going to be developed by anything because the county's not gonna allow that. It's a flood plain. It's a recreation open space.
Well.
So either the Dairy Queen puts, I'm really pushing the people. The Dairy Queen puts the playground back there, or we, you know.
The middle, the middle portion of property was once tellable property, but it still falls under the recreation open space.
But what are we gonna do with the house and all those buildings that are, that are just, if we don't do anything with it, they're going to just deteriorate.
No, Pam, let me know. Colleen, that's one thing. If we entered into this, Six Rivers is willing to split the property, what's up? Yeah, that's to me.
Yeah, Six Rivers has all the money in the world and we do not.
Okay. All right, so.
So be it.
All right.
We can vote on it and then it's.
Go pay.
That's a marker. That's a marker.
Get Six Rivers in here to twist our arms.
Well, for now. I mean, I was talking with Brian Marsaw the other day, and he was saying maybe we should go a little bit slower on this. But I just wanted to bring this to you.
Yeah.
About.
But the Cornwall family will decide what they're gonna sell that property for. And because we have its own commercial, it can go for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's. So, okay.
So what do you want? What do you want to do? Just own it? We have to put something for that.
I don't think it requires any action at all.
It doesn't require any action. We're not going to hire and, we're not gonna hire any of these appraisals.
Really require action. You brought us good information. We don't wanna do anything with it right now.
Okay.
It's over.
All right. Okay, so next month, I will, I'll talk to Pam tomorrow and tell her that our intent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Okay, about the next trust fund grant. And we'll get a resolution and we'll go from there. And.
We're going to have to spend money if we have money.
Yeah. I will find out.
Is clearing that river.
Um. Like the passport grants for reimbursement grant. I'll find out if this, the trust fund grant for development is reimbursement or they need us halfway. When you use a trust fund grant to procure property, they need you. You, you bring your twenty-five percent and they bring their seventy-five percent. So, but I will find that out, so we're not surprised by that. Okay. The next one is. I would like the board to approve the hiring as Chris Rubenap, Christine Rubenap is the town, Casco Township Plan Commission Recordant Secretary at seventy-five dollars per meeting starting the twentieth of February.
I make that motion?
Yeah.
I say, I accept it.
Yeah, Chris was our Recordant Secretary from twenty twelve to twenty nineteen. She did an excellent job. She's a court recorder by trade, so, and I called her up yesterday. I saw her name in the county thing. Certain on the parks and recreating for the. Got linked up with her, called her. I said, would you like to do that for us? And she goes, absolutely, so, yeah. Okay. Okay. We have a motion support to hire Chris Rubenap as the Township Recordant Secretary at seventy-five dollars per meeting starting the twentieth of February. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay.
If I could comment here, since you've appointed and hired someone. Mrs. Rubenap will be also a point of direct contact for Gina, Keith, and I because she will be given a copy of the meeting date and when the minutes will be required. I will let her know that. I will be at the meeting next week. And I hope to meet with Keith and Gina between now and then if possible, if not Gina, and we'll coordinate. And then we'll need to find out definitively who will be in charge of the agenda.
Thanks.
And we'll take it from there.
Okay. Okay, so, anything else? Okay, citizens' comments. Okay, no comments from?
It's the question, has Kurt turned in any more paperwork on violations that he's come up with? Since it was two months ago we had him, has he turned any more in like that?
Well, we had a bit of a technical difficulty on Pretner Report. That's probably the only one for this.
No, no, what I'm saying, do you have on record if I should come tomorrow before I do?
Please don't come tomorrow, Jim. It's the last day of tech.
I'm gonna come Sunday, turn my email up.
Sunday?
You want, yes, we, I want to, oh, you have to bring us.
Today is, today, too late.
Then Kurt will be here on Thursday, come and talk to him then, okay?
Yeah, I'll keep up on current events.
Anyone else?
And speaking of current events, I just want to let the park commission know that the benches.
Oh.
Have been delivered to my barn.
Oh.
They are safe, they are secure. I will, I will count on you to point out spots. I will, I will count on you to point out spots in the, in the park where you want them. And then, we're going to have to decide how to secure them. Because I'm told that too strong people could lift them up and take them out. So, they'll have to be secured. But Mary Jo and a nice team of young men that she got to, to help her, delivered them on Saturday. So, they are safe, secure, out of the weather and waiting for your direction. Thank you. You're quite welcome. Thank her for all of her efforts.
I thank Colleen for pointing out that all may not be lost in getting this property.
Oh, I think that, I, I think if we play our cards right.
We may not be bad. It was hot to trot.
It was always trespassing, so, you know.
Ambush possession.
We could make our own science.
The park pavilion, I'll call on it. They're indicating that it'll maybe arrive soon. They just have to build it up in the place, develop the foundations in, they just have to erect it. What I was looking at, looking at, I'd like to get, looking to get in a time gate out by the road. It has one of those arms that opens when the park, you know, and closes when it does it. So, I think that would be, yeah. But in order to do that, we'd have to get electric brought into the park and all that, so...
And you will be, I would imagine, working with the park commission on times, park times.
Yeah.
Rules and regulations and all those wonderful things that I see printed over at China Township and Columbus Township.
Yeah.
All that sort of thing. You cross that to your judgment.
Yeah, I, I told the parks that this meeting coming up in the month, start thinking about rules and regulations.
And you're in the basement.
Yeah. Yeah, I sent them all in general.
Yeah, we'll have our early voting up here. Sorry. Up here. Early voting will be up here.
We'll be here starting Saturday, every day, Saturday, Sunday.
The planning...
We'll actually be here Friday.
What's my new term of early breakfast?
I don't know, I don't get going in that way.
The planning commission will...
I can make us breakfast.
The February planning commission will also take place down in the basement as well.
Yep.
So... Okay, any?
Oh, right here, see, right there.
Do your little scan over there. Early voting starts Saturday, February 17th. Through Sunday, February 21st. Every day from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I shall come at night, 3:59.
That's fine, we'll be here. And I just want to note that there is not early voting on Monday, February 26th, which is the day before the election. I, I don't know why, but according to the law, and I have a feeling there's going to be people coming in on Monday, February 26th, to vote early. At night. So, they will have to wait until election day.
Doesn't make any sense.
When they first set out this, I, I said, that doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
If you're going to do early voting, it should have just been through Monday and then election day.
It doesn't make sense, you're dealing with the government.
Exactly.
This is true.
It's the state, this is true.
There's a lot of common sense.
Don't worry. Election day is still on Tuesday, the 27th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM as normal too, so.
And you can also, if you also are an absentee voter, new to the law from, from CROP 22 dash 2. Is you can bring your absentee ballot in during early voting or election day and you can actually put it through the tabulator if you wish.
Oh.
Or people on their...
Listen to a poker band at Lewis. She had it in the car, she turned it over and said, where are you going? Oh, the township called to bring my absentee ballot, said, you know, no, no, go up to St. Clair.
We're here tomorrow.
They're on my kitchen table. I'll take you home right now and show you.
That's the end of our little subplots over here for the...
Go, you can go on our website.
Make sure you have the stuff out here. Yep.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we're up to adjournment?
I make that motion. That's four.
Okay, motion for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Support it.
Call. Aye.